I actually sound bad for it.
You're thinking, aren't you?
You're hearing your hearing.
I want to chill.
Want to stand by me, Joe? Yeah. Give me.
Do you see?
What's it? Because of.
I just don't know. I can't read. It's so much. I'm such a good person.
Oh, my God.
Thank you for the work.
Um, we have. Well, that is a whole hour. Just all of them.
Okay, so.
So I said most.
Where do we add? That's the other.
Oh, my God. I see.
Oh, it's rich. We don't know. No, we're not the marginalized old, old, old.
I wasn't trying to take.
Oh, good.
I was trying to irrigate his picture.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. I already got that. I said I wanted to see Craig Bay, but I got that.
Good. I haven't built my mask yet.
I had all these folks.
Don't hear this too.
Well, we appreciate. I have to shower. We really appreciate. The next team appreciates it. For a while, Saturday, probably.
Jerry.
Oh, my God. I was doing more seats like. And sorry. You gotta get shit out of there. That's right. That sucks.
There's one.
There's one way here.
But yes, the front seat.
Right in the front row.
Front row. But Jess is like, not going in the front row. No, it's no shot. Wait for the entire senior class.
I'm not gonna show you.
No, it's not.
They're not there. They're up there. They're in the row.
There are so many people.
You should do that. Why would I be afraid?
Look now. The tires are black. No, it might as well. It might as well. It should be.
What do we do to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Bratton?
Here.
Mr. Tombs?
Here.
This is whatever. Eight here, one awesome.
Welcome, Mr. Borden. We'll see you here next month. How do you like?
On the second.
And welcome to all the students. There will be a quiz at the end, so be listening. Are there any resident property owners?
If you visit the office. So choose carefully. Choose wisely.
Are there any resident property owners that wish to speak before the council, Mr. Cherry?
Good evening. Mike Cherry, Dodge with the Wheel Drive. I couldn't resist coming to your last meeting as a councilman, recognizing everything that's happened under your guidance, light ordinance for combined planning and zoning. Our roads are probably the best they've been in a long time and enabling the mayor's plan to go forward, enabling the mayor with some political staff position. Lots happened under your guidance. New police station. It looks like we're gonna have a contract soon for, you know, depending on actions tonight from architect to take a look at the school stuff. Tremendous two-year accomplishment. Congratulations. And I'm disappointed Sharon's not here. I've been getting up in front of the council since early in the 2000s when I was at EDC. And Sharon was always there to raise an eyebrow, shake her head, tell me when I was going too far. And she will be missed. I learned a lot under her guidance and tutelage. Rough and excellent. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, I know that when the new council comes in on the second, you need to reappoint your staff. And I want to relay, as late as this afternoon, Roxanne was instrumental in my abilities to go use IQM to my limited abilities, no matter how much she tries to make it work. She's been out for four days. We had a meeting tonight. She obviously got a lot of things she needed to get done. And she always goes out of her way to help. And I would encourage you when you come back as a new council, not only reappoint her, but give her really big pay.
I suspect she has nothing to worry about. I suspect.
Are there any committee commission and board reports?
Dreska Thompson, I'm the chairman of pension board, and you have an agenda item later tonight. But first, I want to talk about something much more important. Roxanne needs to raise. So on the agenda, what we're trying to do is we were unsatisfied with Nationwide as our provider for our 401A. So we went and did a search. We had FIA go out. They're our advisors on the pension fund. Do a search. It came to us with three. The three went through an interview. The committee came up with a recommendation. The board passed it along unopposed. And we would like to have IMC as our group provider for three basic reasons. One, they were much more clear on what their fees and costs were gonna be. Two, they have the best investment schedule plan that we can use. And three, they're much more excited about educating the people in the town, the town employees, who are gonna be in the plan. And that's the main reason that we were not happy with Nationwide. So when it comes, that's what we've done. If there's any questions on it, feel free.
Any questions right now? No? We're good. Thank you for the comments. Comments of town council first. Mr. Eichelberg.
I'd like to read this letter into the record. Green Falls Associates LLC has come to my attention that my remarks during the nine October council meeting may have been misunderstood to impugn the character of Green Falls Associates LLC, the developer of the former Watcher's property. That was not the intent of my remarks. However, I have reviewed my remarks from the previous council meeting, and I apologize if my words could have been misused or misappropriated to do so. Sincerely, Mr. Stephen Eichelberg.
Thank you, Mr. Eichelberg. Any other councils? Councilor Marshall?
I'd like to thank all the residents that participated in this election. All the residents that obviously put their signs out in their front yards. The ones that did all that, they voted. And the people that ran for council and voted in, it's a great process to be a part of. And thank you for being there. Second, the downside of that is we're saying goodbye to Sharon Leddy tonight. This will be her last meeting after 14 years. And the.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, sorry, eighteen years. And the knowledge that you brought to the council, the history, the insight, it's gonna be missed. It's gonna be a losing all I heard.
But I'll be much safer.
You will be. Not at all.
We'll let Mrs. Borden, you get pushed off the other side.
It's okay. We'll do that.
Mrs. Bratton.
I'm moving my seat.
Two things. One, the housing authority, that's a commission of five people that oversees the elderly housing in Bratton. And it's, they have five members and should have five members, and there's one vacancy. So if anybody out there is interested, they usually meet once a month. And the meetings take less than an hour, so it's not really a big commitment, but it certainly would be helpful. Also, the alleged visiting, regional visiting nurses released their annual report. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. In the year ending 2013, home care services were provided to 265 individuals and families. Age of the patients served were for three days for 99 years. And they also provided $15,000 in care and services to those without a payer source. And for the fourth straight year, they were in the top 20% of home care agencies nationwide for quality care and exceptional service. And 83% of their revenue comes from Medicare. And as you know, Medicare has been cutting back on their reimbursements. They did very well in revenue this year. They grew in more than was budgeted for last year.
Any other councils have comments? Mr. Songs?
I just want to also second John Marshall's comments about Councilor Medecky. In her 18 years on town council, she has always been an advocate for the taxpayer. She's always been an advocate for schools, for good roads, for all the things that matter, for the fire services, emergency service, for all the things that matter to Ledyard's residents. So I hope all of the residents of Ledyard will join me in thanking Sharon for her years of service. She was a mentor to me and to many of us on this council in telling us what we needed to know, guiding us, giving us reminders and tips, just a really, really great public citizen. And I say thank you, Sharon, from the bottom of my heart.
Any other councils have comments? Mr. Dubrowski?
Just a reminder, I know that the Evergrid system worked today. And all of those who live in the Island area, you probably got received a phone call if you were signed up for Evergrid. But that drive you told me you were doing one main work on Gallico Road. And residents are being warned to avoid washing clothes tomorrow when they're doing this work and avoid drinking any water until it runs out of the task. And also, let's further comment, if Council Marshall comes from. And thank you, Sharon, for her years of service to the town. Much appreciated. I run a lot of commercials.
Thank you, Council Frank.
And along with the other councils, I'll talk about Council Medecky. When I was elected two years ago and made the chair of finance, I came in without a lot of experience related to town government, especially in the finance committee. And Sharon has spent the bulk of her years, about all of her years, on the finance committee as a background accountant. And so I relied on her experience and perspective on how to put budgets together. She was instrumental in helping prepare both those budgets and helped me to understand the process and how to balance fiscal conservative values and the needs of the town to ensure that we provided the services that are needed by the residents, but still mindful of the impact of increasing taxes on properties. I want to thank her for that instruction. And I hope to continue to learn based on what she's given me to start with. Thank you very much.
Any other councils? I would just like to add, as chair, in regards to Sharon, personally, I will miss her a lot. She always helped with procedure, you know, whenever there was something a little bit more complicated than typical. I'd look at Roxanne and then I'd look at Sharon. And usually between the two, I'd get a little nod or a correction. So I will miss her. You know, we had such a good, strong field of candidates. And that says a lot for the town, I think. But she was certainly to be missed. Okay, minute approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 7:00 to 6:45 in 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any corrections? Roxanne, would you call the votes?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Songs?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
And favor zero post?
Motion carries. Communications and referrals you would have received. Moving on to committee reports. Admin, Councilor Eichelberg.
The administration committee met over the last time for this council earlier this evening. And made a couple of appointments, moved forward a couple of appointments. We also put together a list of items that are moving forward for the next committee. One item at this point, but that's what we did.
Thank you. Any questions for Admin? Community Services?
We haven't mentioned our last meeting, but I am going with Russ Shaw, Lieutenant Mike Kinkstein, Paul Smith, to meet with another town to discuss becoming a regional dispatch center. And two other towns heard about this meeting and they'll be sitting in it as well. But I can't disclose those at this point. So that's a positive thing.
Any questions for Council Marshall? Council France, Finance?
The only item we discussed last week is what we need for this meeting. We look at our work going forward, all the other agenda for town council agenda. We have three ordinances discussed two weeks ago that are going to be carried forward to the next council.
Any questions for Finance? Information Technology?
Information Technology held a special meeting on Monday, February 4th at 5:00 p.m. because of the conflict with the election day on February 5th. The committee discussed the recent proposal from Nutmeg Networks with the MIS director. And much to our surprise, they may actually be support for faster speed in the network as well as access to more information. But the town has a contract with AT&amp;T that doesn't expire until 2015, so we're gonna have the time to look into it and think about it. We're putting our hat in the ring, if you will, because you can apply without committing yourself. So we're doing that. The MIS director also reported that the building inspector has now been set up with a tablet and login for electronic field inspections. And the animal control officer and the building inspector were trained on the system. So we are complete with the building department automating forms. We're looking forward to a meeting with them because we actually want to move towards going completely to automation and away from forms. So we're gonna have a meeting with them just to make sure that we haven't missed anything. And if we have, to get the other forms that they need uploaded to the system. We also got an I M I quote from IMC Tri-Tech for their platform that would allow the fire department to use IMC. It's surprisingly expensive, so surprisingly expensive that we are asking for detailed quote from Firehouse because it looks like it might be a lot cheaper to have to maintain two programs afterward. So we're continuing to move forward on that. We also discussed the 2013 C-Task grant with Mr. Edwards. And he's been working diligently to find a projector that will work in the high school at a reasonable cost and also bright enough and present good colors. So we decided to move forward with the other items, and he's still working on the projector. So we authorized the purchase of the other equipment, which would include microphones for each counselor because we know that sometimes people at home can't hear every person who's being recorded at these meetings if the microphone is right in front of them. So he's gonna get multiple mics. By the way, this is all with money, which is a grant, so it's no cost to the town. And a mic mixer as well, so we can control the sound and the feedback. He also provided an update regarding his activities for recycling video. And there have been some unforeseen delays, but he's continuing to upload that. And then in our final action of the year, this town council forwarded a list, which I won't read to you, but it's in the town documentation. It's going to the next town council. And I think that is my report. It is.
Are there any questions for IT?
Just one really quick bill. Is the, when they're completing a form in the field, is it uploaded from there like cellular wise? Or is it where they go back to the office and they upload?
Yeah, and actually, it's a wireless tablet, so that they can not only upload it, but they can also print out your application or your permit or token.
Okay.
In the slot.
Right.
Yeah, a little tiny printer.
Yeah, that's great.
Without calling attention just to your committee, because every committee did good work, I have to say IT has certainly moved really quickly forward over the last several years. It's just amazing the difference between today and two years ago.
Well, thank you for that. But this council and council before have did a lot of foundational work to make homes happen. The automation of the town's processes makes everybody more productive. We estimated it when we started this that just moving to leave laptops access to IQM2 for meetings saved the town $50,000 for paper, printing, postage. That's just the media offices used to get these huge bundles every month. All gone. So that was work done by all of the sponsors, so thank you.
And whoever ends up being the liaison to Board of Education, hopefully we will get the Board of Education sort of where we are in terms of the paper. Okay, Leon Hughes Planning?
Leon Hughes also met on the 4th, also to not affect the election. We continued discussion with regard to the flight ordinance. Recognizes the mayor has appointed Mark Fankoff as a flight enforcement officer, and we are waiting the first meeting of the hearing committee. We've also continued discussion on posting signs for notification of legalism for the free foot for bicyclists on the roads. Just convenient back and forth between Council Songs and Public Works Director Steve Maslin on that, on the sign and that kind of stuff in placement. We've also continued discussion on order 45. We did receive some feedback from Steve Maslin, which we're gonna forward over to the planning and zoning commission for their efforts as well. Continuing to work with EDC to draft proposed lease and policy statements for use of the Yelker Land and how they knew, yeah, Yelker Land, sorry. And we also discussed and brought up in one of our previous meetings during the land transfer to Avalonia in 2020, the way Council Allen had found in documentation to the right of way that Mr. Camerick had talked about that creates the difference of the land. So we discussed that we were to future consider transferring that property over to Avalonia, what was needed to be done prior to maintaining the right of way access. But right now, we're not looking at it. And we also finalized our list of items to forward on to the next land use committee as well.
Any questions for Leon Hughes?
If you mentioned the light committee, do you, as far as me, do you have a complaint?
No, 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 no. Just we're monitoring what's going on.
Oh, okay. So nobody has complained?
Nobody's complained, to my knowledge, with the flight.
They do to meet and formalize their committee.
I think you have a big list if you. Council Dubrowski, that's fascinating about the right of way being pre-exit prior to his purchasing the property because, well, it's just fascinating because actually it would be then his attorney that when he purchased it either didn't point it out or he doesn't remember. But it's actually pretty fascinating.
It actually predated his purchase of land by several, at least seven years, seven to 10 years?
Interesting, interesting. Board of Education liaison, Council Allen?
The Board of Education met last Wednesday at 7:00. There were a few students and parents who spoke in opposition to and in favor of having school on Veterans Day. And I would just point out that there were some news articles that might have stated overstated the number of people that had less than positive comments to make about school being held, but there were three. So anyway, they went on to discuss the different events that were gonna be held at school that day, including all school ceremonies, all school singing or the singing of the Pledge of Allegiance. There were veteran presentations during the day. Greg Keith managed to pull some strings with one David Robinson, former NBA player, who came and spoke to the middle schoolers, which I think is tremendous. And the Navy color guard was present too. And the Board of Ed made a commitment to continue expanding on that program to really make this a meaningful day for the school. The district received a notice of non-compliance. It's usually an area of concern, but in this case, it was specifically regarding storage of facility records. They were stored at central office. They were supposed to be in one place. They were in another in the central office. But not a big deal. The issue was corrected and they filed a response with the state. So that should be taken care of. The building committee selected Silver Petricelli as the architects, and they're working on agreement with that firm right now to start moving ahead with the school plans. They're waiting, still waiting on a $180,000 tech grant they put in for, and hopefully they will know that by the end of this month. AP classes, there were 133 students in AP classes last year. That was down 16 students from the year before. PSATs were up substantially from 135 kids in 2010 to 225 takers of the test in 2013. SAT scores in Ledyard still remain above state and national averages, which is great for here. Hopefully, we will be doing the same. There is an SAT test fee waiver available for students. So if anybody's in need of that, I urge some, urge those people to look into it with the board or with the school. But that's for one test only. So if you're gonna go and take the SAT three or four times, they're not gonna give you three or four times for free. They are considering four new AP classes, statistics, environmental science, art history, and geography. The Board of Ed is right now trying to get through an issue for staffing. If they add these four classes, how they're gonna staff them. And there were some policy things, and I'd like to specifically address these because they directly impact what we're doing. There is a new, the first reading of a budget development and adoption policy. The new policy states that within 10 days of the Board of Ed providing the budget to the town council, the council can make written suggestions for changes which would provide them better efficiency or consolidation of services, non-educational items, so. They then have the right to implement what we suggest as changes. Or if they reject them, they need to provide us written notice as to why they're going to reject. they need to provide us written notice as to why they're going to reject the recommendations that we may make to them. So that's one policy. The next involves, policy 3160 involves budget implementation and monitoring. It requires the Board of Ed to report changes in writing to budget or line items once per month to the town council. So if they're making changes, we're going to know about it. There's going to be more communication back and forth that way. And they also added to that that if that is under $25,000, the finance committee can, will address it, but if it's over $25,000, it's going to be by board action only. Last two quick things, the absence and truance policy. The state of Connecticut made more changes to the absence and truance policy so we had to make more changes. The Ledger High School currently has an absence phone line that they can, that can be called in, absences and parties can be called in, but that is probably going to change because that's not permitted by new state guidelines. And last item was by law 9323 which clarified how the Board of Ed puts together their agendas for regular and special meetings because apparently there were some issues with adding some things to special meeting agendas which is not permitted so they spelled that out. And that's my report.
Any questions, Mr. Grant?
Cover of the law announced a grant for security. Do you know if Ledger applied for that grant?
Ledger did apply for one grant and we received, I believe it was $300,000.
Okay.
And that's the grant that's being used for security cameras and, and some of that.
This is a new grant?
This is a new round. I know. I heard that.
We were on the list, I didn't know if we applied.
I don't think, I don't think that we had.
Okay.
I think we only applied for the last round and we got, I think Ledger got $300,000 and a lot of other areas got nothing. So, but I don't believe we did on this one.
Any other questions or question about the center?
I just wanted to compliment Councilor Allen because he has jumped into this Board of Ed liaison, assigned that and he's not only, I can't remember better Board of Ed liaison now, and when he has questions, he knows that stuff too.
I agree.
Thank you, thank you.
You mentioned the declining enrollment in AP classes and I wonder if the reason was just because of declining enrollment in general or because of scheduling? Did they indicate why? I mean, 16 is probably not significant.
Right. No, they didn't, they didn't identify why the enrollment was down that. I can certainly ask Principal Kagan if she will have the answer, I'm sure.
Any other questions? Liaison reports, WPCA.
WPCA has not met since the last town council.
From the building committee?
Building committee met twice. First was on the 28th of October. I took the interviews with the four architectural firms that they down selected too, as Councilor Allen stated Silver Petricelli Associates was the architectural firm that was chosen based on those interviews. They were actually selected the week after, they took the week to consider. They were three very close firms and they had some discussion with them and finalized that during the meeting on the fourth. In addition to that discussion, the update on the water project, the, as reported previously, Phase One and Two that is done, all that remains is the pump station. Construction completion is still about 13 weeks away but the contract has been let for that. They did sit down or have a discussion concerning the contract status with the architect firm for the police station. Contract was signed now three weeks ago, or work. They were trying to discuss how to manage the day-to-day operations since the building committee typically does once a month. So there was significant discussion on that. There was also discussion of the site survey that was performed and turned that over to the architectural firm. And also the plan is to have the architect, the site plan, Jocelyn Boons, on the 2nd of December. I think they're planning a meeting here in a week, a mid-time period to give any course corrections that need to be done or any discussion about that so you can finalize that in December. Just like that.
Any questions? Mayor's report, Mayor Rodley, Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to add my congratulations to the re-elected and newly-elected town councilors. I look forward to working with the new council and continuing the cooperation we've had in the past two years. As Mr. Cherry said, this council accomplished many good necessary things for the town and I think much of that had to do with communication. So feel free again, as always, to visit, call or email me anytime. I would also add my thoughts to Councilor Wodecki, Sharon Wodecki, and just to let you know how much I appreciated her service over the past 18 years, although I calculate 20 years. I don't, I must have something wrong. She came to the council in difficult and contentious times for the town of Ledger and over the years I think we both came to realize that our differences were primarily in our approaches and not in our objectives. And I will say as mayor, she has become one of my most trusted advisors. Police building project as indicated by Councilor France. Right now we're going through just some reviews since it's been a number of months since the original site and floor plans were done. We're getting, giving input in some side meetings from the police department, the mayor's office, emergency management and EOC because it is the intent to put the EOC from the high school into that building dispatch and to incorporate all of these in there. And the architect is being very cooperative in terms of doing that. We had an original meeting right after, when we signed the contract to find out just one more time whether we could keep the former LV's building just because of the uses we get of that and we quickly realized that we could not keep that building and also that the communications tower is required and we probably will have to move the tower up closer to the building. In conjunction with that project, what my staff is doing, we put a subcommittee together of the town hall staff to review the space needs because there is one office that's going to be, have to be vacated in the ambulance building, that's the town engineer. And even though it's only one person, what we're looking at is the fact that we don't have a space problem. You know, I said all along, we've got plenty of space in the town hall. It's a proximity and arrangement problem. And our objective is really to consolidate functions, you know, nursing, land use and social services, co-locate those. We think that will go much further to serve the public, increase communication between the staff and also use space more efficiently. So, you know, we've looked at it, we're working on that and we hope to be doing that in parallel with the other work on the project. As was mentioned, the Blight, I have appointed the Blight appeals board and they will be meeting with Mark Bancroft, the Blight officer, in the next few weeks again to define responsibilities. I would just say to those that, you know, have their list of Blight things, you know, read the, read the ordinance again, you know, and it may be interesting to narrow down, you know, what really is Blight. What we'd like to do is certainly address some of the more egregious ones. We certainly don't want to get into a situation where we're on the, you know, on gray areas. Just again, address some of these and see what we can do because we think that is a, it's a quality of life issue for our town. I've been working along with Public Works and the police to solve our traffic issue here every day at eight o'clock and three o'clock. We have a solution that's being implemented which will basically use the rear access to the school and you should be seeing that in the next few weeks. We don't know if that's going to solve the problem necessarily but again, it's, it seemed like the easiest and least expensive solution right now. I would like to make a request of the chairman. We will be, after the first of the year, negotiating with six or eight of the town unions and what I would ask is that the chairman appoint a council representative for union negotiations. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Mayor France. Mayor France.
Wow.
Still on San Francisco topic. Although that would mean it's earlier so that's a really poor excuse. Counselor France.
Mr. Grant, the CERMA recently provided us a presentation that had risk management underwriting and in that, the last slide had four recommendations, a couple of which don't specifically Board of Ed stuff, but do you have a plan for what, how to address those four recommendations?
Yes. We have been working, the town general government has been working with CERMA very closely on that report. I will say that we just recently had a meeting where we had representatives of the central office there and we think that that's very important. We have addressed it at the town hall in terms of some of the issues there, but we recognize that there is, we've all come to realize there is a, still an issue on the board's side as far as safety. I understand the, and I would hope that every one of the council has looked at that report. Again, I've seen it for a few years now and, you know, you just see some of the things fading away as things come along. We've done better. It's not a population issue. We recognize that there's over twice as many employees at Board of Ed as there are here but when you bring that up to CERMA, their immediate response is yes, but you've got police, public works, firefighters, ambulances, you know, so you can't just blame it on the numbers. We've met with the superintendent elect, attending meeting and he's definitely ready to go with a plan of action. We're waiting for some additional information from CERMA, some training information that we can use. One of the advantages Board of Ed has is that they do have opportunities to bring their staff together and they plan to do that. So yes, we're working on that. The board definitely is working on that and we will report back when we do the types of training we need to do. Some of the things are very practical. You know, one of the high rates they have is custodians and it's not, you know, custodian just something important, it's the products they use and some of the things like that. So there's some practical things we can do and we will be working on that.
Here's just the people watching at home. Four recommendations which I can mention that are from, one was to implement an accident investigation program. Second is to implement a cost application system. Third is to investigate slip, trip and fall injury trends which is the predominant injury trend that we have in town. And finally was with the Board of Ed, actually reorganization of Board of Ed's safety committee. And for me, the one that I was most excited was the first one, starting root cause analysis of why things are happening, identifying that and putting things in place. It happens to be cleaning things that are causing part of the problem, looking to investigate the change. And if you don't have that investigation, you don't know. If you look at the trends, it looks like we got lucky a couple years and then the other years were high as opposed to a systematic process to reduce that, the accidents.
If I could just respond, one of the impressive rules was number two, which is the reporting period. It's fascinating when you look at that statistic, the number of days it takes to report an accident.
Yes.
Because CERMA reported that the cost of claims is directly related to the time it takes to report. And if you look at it and you do some simple subtraction, you'll see that, you know, in the town hall we tend to report things within a day or two whereas our average at some point was up to eight or nine days for reporting. And when things like that happen, you know, not to, not to cast doubt but, you know, strange things can happen over eight or nine days, you know, when a person gets hurt and then, you know, it's not reported. We certainly in the town hall take that seriously and it's, sometimes it's difficult with your staff. You know, someone picks something up, they strain themselves or they hurt something and eh, you know, it's not a problem. And it could really impress on people, you must immediately report that because what happens is we report that to CERMA that same day. CERMA will literally pick up the phone and call that person and give them directions as to what they should do. And it goes a long way towards reducing the cost of your claims.
I guess we did, the same, dude said baseline's one day. We had, I guess we informed people that's the standard that was expected and this is part of training.
We, yes, it's education, it's department heads, it's supervisors, it's the staff understanding when something happens, don't minimize it, you know, just go and tell people what happened.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mayor, today there was an Everbridge call. Should I, I should not have gotten that call. Should I?
You got one?
I got one. Did it go, I mean, I figured it was a mistake.
There was an issue because I know they had it got up at Seaberry. I don't know what happened. We have to look into that but yes, I did know about that at the end of the day.
Any other questions for the mayor? Any old business? Anyone wish to amend the agenda at this time under your business? Moving right along. Agenda item number one, admin.
I'll move to appoint Mr. John Bollock, Republican of 1414 Monticello Drive, Dale's Ferry, to the library commission for a two-year term ending November 7, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Grabham.
Second.
Any discussion? Good choice. I have Mr. Bulta. Do you know Mr. Bulta? He's a big librarian there, I can tell you that. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one extension?
Motion carries, moving on to finding this, agenda number three.
Make a motion to grant a bid waiver to L Wagner Associates for bid 2013 to 004 to administer the 2014 Small Cities Grant.
Second.
Discussion?
Reason why they're getting a big waiver is only two candidates who did not get it out of the throne. L Wagner Associates has assisted us in the past two grant periods and number one.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one extension?
Motion carries, item number four.
Make a motion to appoint ING as the plan provider for the town's 401A and 457 to find contribution deferred compensation plans.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Thompson presenting the beginning.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero post?
Motion carries, item number four.
Make a motion to appoint ING as the plan provider for the town's 401A and 457 to find contribution deferred compensation plans.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Thompson presenting the beginning.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero post?
Motion carries, item number five.
Make a motion to appropriate state blowing grant revenues that exceed the town's FY14 projection amount of $35,000, Board of Education account or reserve account 2107010158250.
Second.
Question. Agenda says?
Says a lot.
$190,000.
What?
That's $35,000. Yep. Technology's wonderful. $190,000, $179,000. That's why I questioned it.
He have a virus.
Actually, I printed, I have a printed one. I have one ninety but I always know it's a virus.
Now it's, now it read thirty-five.
Further in, further in. Any other questions?
Change before, before the five total being issued.
Any questions? Roxanne, first.
Simple. After the budget, the town budget was there based on the governor's proposed budget which was modified slightly by the legislature.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Any in favor, zero post?
Motion carries, item number six.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding of the Mashakutik people of tribal nation regarding mutual responsibility for pairs and privilege to shoot over the bridge.
Second.
Discussion?
As a background, this has been a number of years, we're making, six years, or the original interview with the sign, and that intervening time, the cost of construction has gone up substantially from what was described there. They have renegotiated and have an estimate that's attached to their file, about $670,000 is the rest of the amount for that, the cost to be shared, fifty-fifty between Mashakutik and tribal nation and town. This is an agreement to lay out the responsibilities for that construction. The project manager will be the town, the town engineer, Mr. Baslin, and the construction manager will be the public works director for the tribal nation.
Any further questions? Discussion?
Not to open up our huge can of worms, is that the right name? I'm looking. Yes, it is. Okay, thank you.
Ask and answer.
All right. You're right. There it is. Yes. Good night. You're right. I did, I did look that up, too. Yeah, I thought it was something else.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Any in favor, zero post?
Motion carries, item number six.
Make a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $35,000 from account 2107010158250 worth of education reserve for architectural services for the following board of education facilities. Design and build and extend and perform innovations to the existing middle school to meet the educational requirements as defined by the Board of Education. And design and build and extend and perform innovations to the existing Galapill and Nook School to meet the educational requirements as defined by the Board of Education. And design and build and extend and perform innovations to the existing Ledger Center and Nook School to meet the educational requirements as defined by the Board of Education. In addition, provide those estimates to the town council and Board of Education. The, this motion, going for finance review, two months ago, we were waiting for the building committee to come through their process, because there was a significant variation between the low and the high of the initial 14 and some bills. Since they singled up on that, this provides margin to negotiate the contract with the Silver Petroselli. In addition, make sure the people are reading it. For the last two, as part of this process, we're not going to build an extension of performance innovation to both Galapill and Ledger Center. The one or the other, but the way the motion needs to read, we don't know which one is going to be, we have to count them both. A lot of people think we're building, we're building three different schools, we only know the two or three, one is a sure little school.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Any in favor, zero post?
Motion carries, item number seven.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding of the Mashakutik people of tribal nation regarding mutual responsibility for pairs and privilege to shoot over the bridge.
Second.
Discussion?
As a background, this has been a number of years, we're making, six years, or the original interview with the sign, and that intervening time, the cost of construction has gone up substantially from what was described there. They have renegotiated and have an estimate that's attached to their file, about $670,000 is the rest of the amount for that, the cost to be shared, fifty-fifty between Mashakutik and tribal nation and town. This is an agreement to lay out the responsibilities for that construction. The project manager will be the town, the town engineer, Mr. Baslin, and the construction manager will be the public works director for the tribal nation.
Any further questions? Discussion?
Not to open up our huge can of worms, is that the right name? I'm looking. Yes, it is. Okay, thank you.
Asked and answered.
All right.